I'm going to ask David to field lead us in our prayer implication.
Father God, we just want to thank you for the night. We thank you for our city Hartford board members on the city council. We thank you for the mayor and the clerks, water clerk, the night one, our visitors here, Lord. We asking you that we get the business in order and get it so the people of Hartford can enjoy good life in Jesus's name. Amen.
We've got a visitor tonight, Dan Drain, who's our, one of our accountants. He's going to give us an audit review presentation tonight. See how they were doing.
This is Paul Lisa. Sorry that this is later than usual, but we had some major staffing problems near the end of the year. We had two of our key people took over their jobs at the end of the year and one, both had accounting degrees. One was the CPA. As I told Lisa, those people aren't walking the streets of Hardensburg right now. We have to try to hire somebody. So we're just trying to dig out a big hole. But this staple copy is something we're just required to give you. The reason for this is because when we conduct an audit, all the work that we do basically is done at this level with mayor and staff and so forth. So this is basically to inform the council that you've been audited, what the purpose of the audit is, no difficulties encountered, no uncorrected statements. That you gave us all the information that we asked for. So the actual audit itself is the balance copies. It is clean opinion. I saw pages one through three. Financial statements then begin on page four. They are, statement of net position is the first one. This one started in 2004 that the government's now required to give one of the presentations to be on a business-like basis. So the middle call of governmental activities primarily the general fund, but also would have road fund and some of those other minor funds in it. This presentation books everything, including this building, police cars, fire trucks, furniture and fixtures, records depreciation on it. And on the other side of it, records debt, long-term debt. The middle one of business-type activities is water, sewer, sanitation has always had this kind of presentation. The reason being that those are hardly business activities because they're paid for primarily through user fees. But if you see the total assets under governmental activities, 5.6 million and nine and a half million on business-type liabilities are almost 2 million on the governmental, 4.2 on the business-type. Between that and also with these deferred outflows, all of those things are functions of county employer retirement systems. We are required now to book this on the same basis that if suddenly the state decided that every participating employer under CERS had to settle up with them right now. The total liability, non-current for the city of Hartford, for the pension liability would be $2.1 million. And they all have liability, which is the fact that CERS has to cover health insurance for the life of retired employees. So you put those two numbers together and then suggest a little by deferred outflows and inflows. But basically it would cost Hartford right now with $2 million to settle up with the state if suddenly they decided that there's nowhere to form them for and all those participating employers had to pay it up. You know, the odds of that aren't very good, but this liability is still hanging out there. And it's either to be done with tax increases or changing the system in some way. Page five, segment activities. This is the same one. This is still the business-type. All governments, the purpose of them is to provide services to citizens. So it begins with expenses and then to the right it shows how it's paid for. The governmental activities cost $1.4 million to provide, but you see there's such a minimal amount of charges. So basically governmental funds, mostly the general fund, is paid for by these two revenues at the bottom, primarily taxes. But then the business activities, you see water, sewer and sanitation, and then you look over to the right and you see how those are paid for. Still, even with that, every one of them, every single one, water, sewer and sanitation, also loss. Overall, the governmental activities came out at the bottom line. Changes in net position was a positive 5.4 on 13. But the changes in net position for governmental activities, this is after some transfers, was a loss of just about 9.4 million or $9,400. And the balance sheet, page six, is our traditional presentation. For governmental funds, all that's booked under this are assets and liabilities that are either currently available or that could be paid in the short term. Under this, you have cash and receivables, utility deposits, 2.8 million in assets and 13,000 liabilities. So the fund balance, this is essentially the net worth under this presentation, 2.5 million. And then at the bottom, it shows how you get from this one to the 3.8 million that's shown on net position. Page seven is the revenues and expenditures. That's probably a lot what you're seeing before. But the net change in fund balance on that for the general fund is 624,000 dollars per year. Fund balance at the end of the year under this presentation is positive 2.5 million dollars. Now on page eight, it shows how you get from that to the business-type basis. And you see, when you go through all that, there's not very much difference. It goes from 5.4 to 5.4. Page nine is a balance sheet for the three proprietary funds, water, sewer and sanitation. You've pretty much seen that before in segment of activities. Page 10 is the same three funds as income segment. Page 11 is cash flows, and that's literally money in and money out. And cash over all three funds to be able to increase by $38,000. And you've got where that all comes from. Receives and customers, use it for buying capital assets, making money from this on debt, so forth. And lots of notes beginning on page 12. See, those are the values that might be relevant. Page 21 is receivables and payables, number five, and that shows what one fund may owe to another one. And you know, as you can see, over the years, there's been a lot of support for the water fund. It's come from the general fund. Ideally, all these funds stand on their own. I mean, of course, that takes, in a lot of cases, rate increases, you know, what anybody really wants to do. And that situation's probably better than it was, but it's still hanging out there. That means that the water fund actually owes the general fund 1.2 million and then it owes all these other, sewer fund and sanitation fund. 22 is pretty relevant. That's changes in fixed assets. The main additions in the governmental activities, infrastructure, that's streets, street improvements, sidewalks, business-type activities, really not a lot of activity in that. A lot of that was done in, before that. We had a lot of federal money going on here in years before that. But the end governmental activities, net after depreciation came off, was increased from 2.9 to 3 million. And then the business-type activities from 9.8, actually depreciation was a little more than the new purchases were in the bottom, first depreciation out Page 23 is the debt structure, and that shows. That's all the debt of the city, the top part, the governmental activities. Biggest one there is the fire station, maintenance building and land. No additions really to any of these this time. Everything was deletions. So a substantial amount of debt was retired during the year, 90, almost 95,000 on the business activities and 43,000 on governmental. When I first started doing this audit, there was always a notice commitment in there because the city borrowed money just to operate on it because there was never enough cash to get through until tax bills came out. And so that's something, you know, realizing you got a lot of federal money now too, but that's something, even before that, the city had worked its way out of that. It was at least able to cash flow itself all the time without having to borrow money for operations. Now 24 just shows some more detail on something I think. In all this business on these pension plans, it starts on page 26. This used to be about a page and a half. Now it goes for Hartford before it goes to 26, all the way to the top Page 33 is usually of interest. That's the general fund budget. And you can see on that that the actual revenues for general fund were almost 7,000 more than budgeted. Expenditures were 23,598, but that had some capital outlay in it that wasn't included in the budget. So except for that, all of the normal current, it came out really almost exactly the amount that was budgeted. But you see the bottom line on what the fund balance budgeted to have a million five and you hit almost 2.6 million at the end of the year. So your actual budget was over a million dollars better than the amount that was budgeted. So on page 34 is a lot more information on pensions. The net going all the way to the notes on 39. Secondary information on page 42, that just present, you have three that was considered non-major funds, cemetery, LCEA, road fund. And the income segment for those three funds. The road fund showing on page 41 showing the loss is a little bit misleading because there's so many timing issues in road money. Sometimes you get it and spend it both in the same year. Sometimes it shows a gain because you get the money and don't do the projects until the following year. Sometimes you have the money on hand and you do it, you do it in a year when you spend more than the amount that you took in. But still, the road fund had a positive balance from 1,000 dollars at the end of the year. 42 breaks down general fund in detail. Page 43 is required reports on compliance, internal control. 45 is a management level. These are the ones that we consider more in the area of suggestions and anything. And the only matter we included in net was that particularly a lot of the money that you got, your bank balances during the year exceeded the 250,000 dollars that FDIC allowed. So the way that cities compensate for that is they get the banks to place some securities. Lisa said she had those now at this time fully covered. But basically, the problem in trying to do it with FDIC is there aren't enough banks in Ohio County. You can't spread it out enough to have 250,000 dollars in each one and be able to cover the amount of cash that you had on hand at the end of the year. So this is probably the only one of these that we don't have several detailed findings. And the only thing we had on this one is just that one that it's really more important than suggesting anything else. We generally will have findings on internal control. But a lot of our cities also are so small that they only have one or two people working in an office. And there's no way that they can have that same kind of control system. But you all go to quite a bit of trouble here to try to spread those responsibilities out. And you know, we don't find any significant weaknesses in internal control here. So are there any questions on any of this?
I might have to go back and read through it all.
I was telling you, you can always call me if you go through this and you've got something, you can always call me.
I appreciate it.
Appreciate it, Dan. Thank you so much. Your check's in the mail.
I haven't billed you yet.
Okay, let's take a look at our minutes from our previous meeting, see if you have any questions, comments. I entertain a motion to adopt the February 24 meeting minutes and then later on, the March 10 meeting minutes.
Make the motion.
Okay, second. Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, the March 10 meeting minutes.
Motion.
All right, second. Okay, any discussion? All in favor of adopting those minutes? Okay, motion's carried. Okay, then we go to our financials. Well, let's see if Tara's got anything for us tonight.
Nothing for an open meeting.
Okay. Our financials, any questions about those? Any discussion? If not, then I entertain a motion to adopt the financial reports presented to us.
Make a motion. We accept this financial report.
All right, second. Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion's carried. Okay, our old business then. We have the second reading of the closing of the alley. Somebody will read that and then we can have a motion to adopt it.
I'll read it.
Okay.
Ordinance 2022-01, council, unnamed alley between Smith Street and Thomas Street.
Okay. I entertain a motion to adopt that ordinance?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, second. Any discussion regarding this motion?
I second it. Was this at the request of the citizens? Was this done at the request of the citizens?
At the request of one, and the others were agreeable to do it. So most of them didn't even know there was an alley back there. Motion's carried.
They've all used it. I don't know why they didn't. They've all used it. I don't know why they didn't.
The one that they knew was the city's alley though, you know, they've used that property just like it was their own, you know, they've mowed it.
It's not a paved area. It's like an old cold delivery.
I know what it is.
Okay.
It's been many a day back there.
You've walked on it before, hey?
Yeah. I've seen plenty of people driving through there.
Can't now because there's a big tree growing in the middle of it. Okay, any more discussion? All right, all in favor of that? Okay, motion carried. Well, the floor for new business. The first thing that's listed there is surplus vehicles. We've got four, well, actually five surplus vehicles. We've got a 2010 Ford Crown Victoria. We've got a 2002 Chevy pickup truck. We've got a 2004 Chevy Tahoe. We've got a 1999 International Pumper Truck from the fire department. And we've got a little five-by-eight utility trailer that we don't need. It's probably put together, but joining two together, I think, it's not worth very much. Anyway, I'd like, I'm going to need a motion to declare these vehicles surplus and then we'll discuss getting rid of them.
I'll make the motion.
Okay.
With discussion.
Okay. Go ahead now. He's seconded. Tony did. Okay. The International Pumper Truck is a '99 model. We've got a fire department over at Rochester that would like to purchase the truck from us. And we've agreed on a price of $35,000. And I'd like to just recommend that we go ahead and sell that pumper truck to the fire department at Rochester for that amount.
I'll make the motion. We sell it to Rochester.
And I think, Lisa, Mayor, if I'm not mistaken, I guess it's our decision basically, but with that money, they would like to pay squat off with the remainder of that payment after they sell that truck.
Okay.
That's the way they talk about it.
Yeah, they won't present it to me that way, but that's fine. You know, that's what you want to do. Okay?
You already had a...
Is that okay with the motion to do that? All right.
I'll second it. Yeah, I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion?
And that's a pretty good price for that year of a truck. You won't find a better deal. They're excited about purchasing that truck, so.
We can do that. We can transfer it to another government entity with or without compensation. So they're compensating us for it.
But however, if that does fall through and they don't purchase it, I would still like to put that cap on price. That way, if we put it on the internet, still, you know, have a reserve on there. That way, it's not a little bit of...
Okay. Okay, we'll vote on that then. We agreed to sell the pumper truck to Rochester for 35,000. All in favor? Okay, motion's carried. For these other three vehicles, I'd like to try to put them on govdeals.com. We'd have a better chance of getting some fair mouth for them, I think.
Yeah, we've had good luck with the county by doing that. That's all we do now is just govdeals. We've had some really good luck with that.
I think that's one of those that's maintained too, where it satisfies your advertising requirement.
And if there's not one set up, Lisa, I know that Charlie Shields has got one set up that he wouldn't care to help.
We can set one up. We've got a buyers. We don't have sellers, agree with us.
Okay.
Any discussion about that?
I'd still like to put a reserve on maybe that 2010.
Do what now?
Still like to put a reserve on that 2010 cop car. I mean, I don't want to go on for a dollar.
That's what the discussion's about.
Well, not a dollar.
What do you feel like's fair? Do you want to just look at comparable 2010 Fords?
I'll just say, I'd hate to do that because they would go for it, really.
You could probably get an NADA fair.
Fair market value, yes.
How many miles are on that 2010?
I don't have the mileage on it yet. We'd have to...
I just know they're selling for...
Get all of them before we get to it. Shouldn't have a whole lot of miles. It's a lot of hours on the engines where they end up being and so.
I guess Jason would probably have a ballpark idea, wouldn't he?
Well, I can go to David Johnson over here and ask him what 2010 Ford Cruiser's worth, you know.
Yep. I think he'd be good. I'm good with it.
So I'll make a note to have a reserve on it. And the others, just let them go.
Just whatever. Those are pretty...
I'll buy a truck tonight. I need a truck. I was bucked by his.
Sorry, I don't, I'll meet you in jail, okay?
Yeah.
We did that.
Never mind.
Okay. I mean, I can put a reserve on the others if you want me to.
I don't think the rest of them are worth it.
Do what?
I don't think the rest of them are worth having a reserve on.
Well, anyway, so we'll go ahead and advertise these on govdeals.com. Okay. All in favor of doing that? Okay, motion's carried. I don't know about the utility trailer.
So can you, let me ask you this. Can you surplus that? And can you advertise that in the newspaper for sealed bids?
Yeah. They're even adding on Facebook.
I want to do that on that.
It's only worth...
Probably not worth the advertising price, to be honest.
Hundred, $150. If you spend more, I'm putting that in the paper.
I can use it. I can use that trailer. I can use that trailer.
Okay.
So if we can put that in the newspaper, sealed bids.
All righty. I mean, people are stealing them. You know, they have some worth.
We might hunt blindsing out of trailers, so.
They're stealing right and left, you know. They're too easy to hook up to and take off with, cut the chain. Okay.
So I don't even want that one. I'll just newspaper that one.
All right then. So need a motion to put it sealed bid in the paper.
I'll make it.
All right, second. All in favor? Okay. Get that taken care of. All right.
I'll bid on that trailer, okay?
Everybody just go on and get that on the web.
Okay, let's see.
Best trailer you ever bought.
I got an email from the Kentucky Infrastructure Authority that our water tank project had been submitted for a grant by Earl Coffee. And we have received notice that we have a grant of 175,000, I thought I had it written down. Oh, yeah, $763. It's a grant that comes to us. We don't have to match it. It's just free money. It's coming down from KIA, but I have to sign a commitment letter that we want the money. It's the preliminary start right now. So I'm asking for permission to fill out the commitment letter and send it back that we will gladly receive the 175,000 plus.
So does this have to be designated, you already designated it for a project already?
No, they did. They did.
So what was the project then?
It was submitted by the engineer. This project was submitted, you know, for a grant. And that's what they're... It was submitted by the engineer, this project was submitted, you know, for a grant, and that's what they're granting us, is the amount that for that. How high it arrived at that amount? I don't know, I think they've got so much money, and they just divided among the projects they've got, probably proportionally to what the cost was.
How long, how long we got to use it?
Do what now?
How long have we got before we have to use it?
Well, um, there wasn't any stipulation about that, now, it's coming out of ARPA funds that KI has access to. And the ARPA funds have a stipulation that, um, things have to be under contract by the end of two thousand and twenty-four.
Okay.
And the money has to be expended by two thousand and twenty-six. And if not, then it goes back to the federal government.
So, we got plenty of time, right?
Usually, on, when you do something like that, by the time you get to these projects and get your pay request and everything, it takes a while to get it down the road. And if you're using that, which is coming from ARPA funds, from KIA, plus some of your ARPA funds, you kind of want to jump on things to get it, to get it done before the money runs out, before the time runs out.
So, I just need the permission to sign the commitment letter that, you know, Hartford will accept that money.
How much of the project will that cover?
Well, we don't know for sure, the project had been bid, it probably, well, I'd say about a third of it.
Okay.
A third?
So, how much of the ARPA money that you were wanting to use on it, would that leave?
Well, we don't know for sure, it'd estimate it's gonna cost around five hundred thousand.
So, you look probably three hundred, three hundred or more.
Do what now?
Three hundred or less on ARPA funds?
Yeah. Um.
Yeah, four hundred maybe.
Yeah, I'm just trying to, uh, think, we've, we've received, all in all, from the federal government, a little over one point two five million dollars through this ARPA fund.
Hartford or the county?
Hartford. Uh, that's one reason you see the general fund looks so full right now, is because it's, it's where the ARPA funds that we have received are, are stored. We've still got another three hundred and fifty-two thousand that we're expecting sometime this spring. It's the last half, half of it came in the fall, and half of it, they said, would come in the spring of the, of that money. We've still got Senate Bill Thirty-six money coming in, which is another hundred and thirty thousand plus. So, all in all, we've, we've received or been promised over one point two five million. Covid was good to us.
And what was that, hundred and thirty thousand? Where's it coming from?
That's Senate Bill Thirty-six money. It, it has to be used for, um, for a water project. So, we can use it, and then this grant, and really knock down the use of our ARPA funds for a tank rehabilitation habit to use at Ellis Park or some other, some other project that comes up that qualifies.
Take part of, finish up down at the plant? Couple more projects that'd be done down there and then.
Well, you know, the projects really that are down there right now are fairly small, you know, the only big project we would have down there is if you decided you wanted to add another actiflow to the system. And it would improve the processing of the water, it would slow it down, where the chemicals have more time to work, you know, right now, we're pushing it through pretty fast, they tell me. And so, we'll put a second actiflow, but it's, it's, engineers looking at approximate cost right now, and it's, it's well over a million dollars.
Well, that, what I was getting at though, when Chris was down there last month.
Yeah.
He had what, about?
I've got some other projects.
He had about three different projects, right?
Yeah.
And we took care of one of them, what the team.
Right. We've got the other two are, don't have to be bid, they're, they're smaller.
Yeah.
But, uh, we do need, right, need to do those.
Yeah, that's what.
Now, I want, I want to say something too, right here. Whenever this, our budget that we're gonna vote on tonight, whenever it is published, it's gonna show that your occupational tax has over a million dollars in it. I'd like for us to think more frequently about using the occupational tax for our infrastructure needs, because when people who are employed in the city look at that, that you've got over a million dollars, what's gonna be their first idea is, you have to lower it. And I don't think that's something that we can afford to do, really, I think we need to be using more of it right now to get that down where it shows that, you know, we're trying to use their money to help people in Hartford. Uh, that's something I'd just like for us to consider. But anyway, um, we digress from our request, and that was to have a motion to allow me to sign the commitment letter for that grant money.
A motion that we signed.
Okay, is there a second?
I second.
Okay, any discussion about it? Okay, all in favor? Okay, thank you, motion carried. Um, we've got a, we've, we've put out for bids the, uh, you know, the project on Country Club Lane, that pump project. And we've only got one bid, and that was the bid that was first submitted to the, to the water, uh, operators about doing the project. Um.
From whom?
Do what now?
Who, who submitted the bid?
Uh, it's, uh, S and K Equipment Company out of Vincennes, Indiana. Um, the Country Club Road Project is gonna, well, let me just go down through it, what they, what they're bidding on here was a, a custom building to house this. It's gonna be an above-ground pump setup. Um, it's got a booster package, and basically has three pumps, uh, two twenty-gallon a minute pumps and one eighty-gallon a minute pump. Um, the twenty gallons will be used in times of little demand. Um, the eighty gallon will be used, it'll kick in automatically when there's a, a greater demand for the water and put more pressure into it. Um, it's got all these controls, the draw house there in the, uh, in the building. Um, anyway, uh, the, the county has, uh, promised to pay us twenty-four thousand for their part in it. Uh, the total bid is, uh, seventy-six thousand twenty-three dollars. And, um, by the time the county pays their part, we'll be down to about fifty-two thousand.
I thought they were gonna pay half of it.
Well, they were, but the original bid was for forty-eight thousand, and that's what they agreed to pay twenty-four for. I mean, I can approach them and see if they will go ahead and pay this half of this.
I think they should.
Well, I can approach them.
Either that or we annex.
Ask them. But, uh.
Let's do it anyways.
Hmm?
Let's do it anyways.
It's no problem, you know, I mean, we had that commitment of twenty-four thousand, but I'll approach them and say, you know, the, the bids for a much better pump system and, you know, we'll see if they won't pay the, uh, thirty-eight thousand for their half of it.
That above-ground building, does it have heat in it?
It's a, uh.
Included in that price?
It's a fiberglass, I don't know that it, uh, the pumps are the only thing that are above-ground. Of course, the lines are underground, but, um, uh, let me see here. It doesn't say right here whether it's got heat in it or not, it's got, um, it's got an exhaust fan with matching intake exhaust shutters, a thermostat for the fan, um, molded gel-coat weather hoods, one for each shutter, one externally-mounted switch for the fan and light. Um, I don't know that it needs heat in there, but.
Who's gonna maintain that building and the equipment, us?
We're putting it in, yes.
In the wintertime, if it don't have some kind of heat system, wouldn't the pumps freeze up?
I don't think.
Uh, I, I don't know, I know that our, like, our, our pumps at, uh, our lift stations, they're, they're not heated, you know, so I don't know if it's, uh.
They run all the time then?
Well, this one needed, you know, it's, just whenever the, the sump fills up, then that's when they kick on, you know, so. Uh, evidently, I mean, I can check into it, um, if it doesn't have heat in it, I would think they would say it probably doesn't need heat, you know, if, otherwise it would be listed. Um, let's see, I don't have my phone, I'd call Chris right now and talk to him and ask him about, um.
Unless when it kicks off, all the water drains out of it or something.
Well, it's, it's in a line, you know, it's, uh, it's, the, the water has to go through the pumps.
Yeah, I understand that.
So, the only time they kick on is whenever there's a demand for it, you know, and it senses that there's water needed, so the pump kicks on. But whether it needs heat or not in there, uh, I don't, I don't know, they may generate their own heat, I, I don't have any idea, but I'll, I'll, uh, ask.
You'd think it needs something for them pumps not to freeze.
Huh?
You'd think it needs something for them pumps not to freeze up.
Well, sometimes it just takes a light bulb or something like that, is all the heat it, it takes, you know, just to keep from.
Well, that's, I don't know, the building, it'd take more than the light bulb to heat it, keep it from freezing in there.
Oh, I, I had a, a pump at a farm where we lived, uh, it's in a wellhouse, concrete block wellhouse. I mean, it was above-ground. And, uh, wintertime, all I had to have was just a light bulb on in there, and it kept it, uh.
But you said this was fiberglass, right?
Um.
Fabric glass building?
Let's see. It says it's a custom building, ten foot by ten foot, about seven foot six inch sidewall, complete with dual-leaved door, thirty-six inch wide, two-point locking device, locking handle, continuous stainless steel hinge. Uh, and this talks about the electrics and something like that, they, they, they first told me that it was, um, fiberglass, but then this doesn't say anything about it, so it may be just a regular, uh, stud and framework type building.
That size building, it's gonna take more than a light bulb to heat that.
Well, I don't know how it's insulated or anything, you know, but.
Is the water constantly flowing?
Hmm?
Is the water constantly going?
No. Only one pump at a time, isn't it?
Got the two for the slow period, and you've got the eighty pump, eighty-gallon pump for the.
Okay, let me, let me, uh, just, uh, we'll postpone this till next meeting, and I can, uh, check on all these questions that you've got.
I made the point, somebody go out there and load coal in the pharmacy and it every night.
We may need that truck, that truck, we'll have to take that back.
We gotta have that truck.
Yeah, I'll call them.
Okay. All right, so we'll just postpone that, that bid until, make it old business for next time. Okay, um, next thing is our, our budget for next year, fiscal year. Supposed to give you a budget message, if I can find it. Okay. All right, here's my budget message for this budget coming up. Uh, tonight, we're presenting a bu, proposed budget for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three fiscal year. Uh, this budget not be unlike, in many respects, former budgets the city's presented, presented before. Revenues will still primarily derive from three sources, property assessment taxes, insurance premiums taxes, and occupational taxes, all expected to remain consistent with past revenues. However, the federal government has channeled funds to cities and counties for Covid pandemic relief. Uh, funds received and promised to the city of Hartford totaled over one point two three million dollars. Only stipulation to the funds is that contracts to use these funds must be signed by the end of twenty twenty-four, money is expended by the end of twenty twenty-six. Uses for these funds are also very limited, if the funds are not used, they must be returned to the federal government, and the general fund would revert back to its normal level. Expenditures are expected to be similar to past years, but anything costly can happen at any time during the year. Employees will receive a three percent increase in wages since the cost of living has increased due to inflation. Prices for supplies and chemicals are expected to continue rising. Our water plant, now twenty years old and beginning to show its age, is needing repairs and parts replacements on a more regular basis. Some parts are now obsolete and obtainable, causing systems to need to be reworked. Yet with costs for producing water rising, we still try to keep the cost to our citizens as low as possible, requiring fund transfers to the water account from other accounts. The maintenance police departments are experiencing rising costs as well, but otherwise are experiencing little change. We will not expect to purchase another police car until next fiscal year, which has been our practice of doing so every other year. We've experienced a low, loss in staff personnel, but those vacancies have been filled more than adequately. Uh, in the near future, the major changes and expenditures may, may be the water tank rehabilitation and construction work at Ellis Park. Otherwise, no major or significant changes are anticipated at this time. We're also not contemplating any changes in our financial policy for the city. City of Hartford is situated in the best financial positions that it has ever experienced. We're thankful for the federal government's financial help, but this is a unique experience and we cannot depend on it in the future. The situation mandates that we take this best opportunity and do the most to better our citizens' lives. I hope we can take advantage of this chance to make a difference while we have it. And that's my budget message for the year.
So, we're not planning on trying to create a better infrastructure in our water lines?
Well, we have to do that on a as-needed basis right now. You, you want, you know, you asked me to come up with some cost for replacing all the water lines, to replace just the ductile and the, uh, uh, oh, the pipe, uh, would cost a little over one point three million, just the, just the price of the pipe alone. Uh, the cost of putting it in, you calculate that at about sixty-five dollars a foot, and that takes care of digging, trenching it, uh, replacing the pipe, filling the back end with gravel, uh, resurfacing all the streets that are affected, it's gonna be a little over seven point two million. So, you're looking at about eight point five million dollar project to, to replace all those lines.
I'm not surprised at that.
Do what now?
I'm not surprised at that.
Uh, only funding right now that we've got available would be through either grants, which are gonna be fifty-fifty grants, that means we'd have to come up with four, four and a quarter million. That, that's just an estimate right now. Um, or you can get a loan for about three percent interest per year, something like that. That's the only place you're gonna have any revenue to do that kind of a project. That's the only place you're gonna have any revenue to do that kind of a project. Now, they're replacing lines as they can. They're doing one up on Burton Court. They got a leak up there right now, but that's, they're gonna replace that whole line up there, so, I mean, that's just... Do it as you can, you know, just, whenever there's a need, you take out the old line and put a new line in. As long as the old line's working, you're good for a better ride, so...
Are you still looking, I'm sorry, are you still looking to get this coal severance money too?
Um...
For the fiscal, next fiscal year?
So, are you looking at MRA or LGEI?
LGEI.
Yeah, that, uh, that's based on what we got this year, 'cause they...
So you're just basing it basically?
Definitely will not be any more than...
I didn't figure it would be.
This is just a first reading tonight, isn't it?
Yeah, it's all... Yeah. Okay, so I need somebody to, um, give us a first reading on ordinance twenty-twenty-two dash O two.
Nothing, as far as I'm seeing so far, nothing's been cut on any budgets, like, nothing's been taken out.
There's nothing that's been taken out, no.
On any of them?
The, the, the tank is in there along with the grant funds for the reduction of the tank.
So what page is that on?
Uh, you'll see on your, on the water, at the top, where it says water.
On here?
No, on the, the detail page.
Okay, right here?
Uh-huh. Is that water?
Yes.
Okay, and that top section, you'll see where we receive, will receive in a hundred seventy-five thousand, seven sixty-three. And then you'll see in the bottom, that correlates to it, an estimated of five-hundred-and-fifty thousand for capital outlay. That would be the actual price of...
So are you designating from ARPA funds for that resisting of the project then, or...?
Not on that, no. That, uh, a hundred seventy-five is KIA, which, well, you said was a form of ARPA funds, but it's coming from Kentucky Infrastructure.
We can go ahead and have the first reading and discuss this at our next, you know, between now and the next council meeting. We don't have to vote on it tonight, so give you a chance to look it over and bring questions. Come to the clerk's office and ask questions at any time, you know, to... Somebody, did somebody read the first two lines of that ordinance, and we can get, get on with it?
I'll read it.
Thank you.
Ordinance twenty-twenty-two dash O two. An ordinance adopting the City of Hartford's annual budget for the fiscal year, seven, July the first, two thousand twenty-two, through June the thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. I estimating revenues and resources and appropriating funds for the operation of the city government.
Okay, thank you. We'll, we'll save that at our next meeting. Um, let's see, I've got a, one of the things that you were asking about, what Chris brought to us last time, um, the hardware upgrade for the Active Flow. When he brought it, uh, the first time, that was probably about a month or two ago. Um, it had a six-to-eight week wait period delivery for delivery. Now it's up to twenty-four to twenty-eight weeks of delivery. Um, the cost for it is eighteen thousand, eight-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars and twenty-eight cents. Doesn't require being bid. Um...
It does require being bid. Why don't we go ahead and get it on order?
Do what now?
Why don't we go ahead and get it on order?
Well, I need a motion to...
Motion is so made.
Okay, for a second?
Make the funds out of operational tax.
Okay, thank you. Um, if this, if these controls go down...
What was that total again?
It's gonna be, uh, right now, it's gonna be six to seven, it's, uh, eighteen thousand, eight ninety-nine, twenty-eight cents.
Thank you.
What Jeff is saying, if, um, if he has these already available, it'll take him about two days to change things out. We'll have to buy water from High County Water. If we don't have them, right now, it's gonna take six to seven months. Then we'd have to buy water while we wait for them to come in. Okay, is there a second? Okay, jurisprudence. All right, any discussion, any more discussion? All in favor? Okay, thank you.
They need anything else? We need to get under order before we...
Close up again?
Yeah.
Yeah.
What is that?
Pardon?
What, does he need anything else?
No, not right now. Oh, um, you mean, did Chris need anything else?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, he needs, uh, the state came by and inspected our water plant and everything, and they highly recommended, uh, that we get the, the valve changes over from one chlorine tank to the other. And it requires electronic scales for them to sit on so that it can tell when it, when it's empty, so, um, the switchover is two thousand, eight-hundred-and-forty-three dollars and ten cents, and the, uh, scales, uh, are one thousand, nine-hundred-and-ninety-seven dollars, so it's, uh...
Less than four thousand.
About four thousand.
Well, we do that too.
Okay.
Motion's all made.
Second, all right.
Take it out of operational tax.
Yeah. All in favor? All right, motion carried. Um, that's all the business I've got. I've got two announcements. One of them is that, uh, KLC is host, hosting the Planning and Zoning Seminar. House Bill fifty-five requires so many hours every two years. Uh, they're hosting the Planning and Zoning Seminar over at Owensboro. Next Wednesday, it'll be from eight-thirty to five o'clock at the Greater Owensboro Chamber of Commerce. Uh, cost is sixty-nine dollars. Uh, Chamber of Commerce over there is located at two hundred East Third Street. That's next Wednesday from eight-thirty to five. You have to pre-register. Uh, if you need help, uh, Lisa can help you. The second announcement is that, uh, Grad is hold, holding an ARPA, SL, FRF, I don't know what that is, state and local fiscal recovery funds. Anyway, they'll hold a roundtable discussion at the Grad office. Uh, that's next Tuesday at two o'clock. Uh, you need to register for that, but there is no cost for it, but you need to pre-register for...
State, local, federal funds?
Well, it is, that's the title for it. You can, up there at the top, it...
Is it to kind of better discuss what you can use the money for, or is that...?
What you can use the money for and, uh, what peo- what cities are doing with their funds, things like that, you know, so... It's just a roundtable discussion that they make available to all, uh, the cities and, uh, I'm not sure the counties are involved with that. But you need to pre-register for that, so that's two o'clock next Tuesday at the Grad office. That's all I've got for tonight, if, uh...
I've got, I've got one thing. Let me find it. Justin Count texted me and was wondering if there was anything that we could do at the Boys and Girls Club. They have a streetlight behind the pickup drop-off area. Help me out, Dustin. What's, you know anything about that? There's a pole there, but there's not a light.
I haven't been at the last couple meetings.
Where is the pickup area? And...
It is...
Big lot there in the front.
It's on the back by the old cafeteria.
Yeah.
Yeah, right there in that corner. So I was, I didn't know if there was anything that we could do there.
They need a light, but I'd put one there.
I know that there is, I think, one light on the building, 'cause I think whenever we were going to have the, uh, family night or something, it was out, and it was pitch black.
Pitch black, yeah.
Uh, and I assume that they're talking about, like, out near the road or whatever, uh...
If it's near the road, can we see if we can get maybe somebody to look into it?
If it's near the road, we can. If it's on their property, we're supposed to...
Right, I understand that.
Do, who, why do we have these yellow lights, or whatever they are?
That's just the ones that, uh, KU puts in.
They've, they've replaced several of them with the LEDs. The only problem is, I don't know if y'all noticed, we walk a lot. The LEDs will come on and they go off.
Yeah.
And then they'll come on again, and they'll go off. The yellow ones at least stay on. It's weird.
You can't see anything, but yeah, they're on.
That's all I got. We can look into the one if it's by the road.
Yeah, I think that's good idea for us.
I'll go by there. Later, checking out myself.
While you're talking about lights, I got a question. When we gonna install the light poles on the main street?
The...
The extra ones, we need.
The extra ones. Uh, I've been in contact with, uh, Royal, and they were waiting to, uh, they were trying to get their own boring tool. They decided, uh, the, the cost that we had, the estimate that we had to trench and to do concrete was what you all thought was unreasonable, and I agreed. Uh, Royal is trying to get a boring tool where they can bore on the ground and cut down their costs quite a bit, but I've not ta- contacted them in the last few weeks or so, so I can call, I can call her again and see what they're doing. Um...
Yeah, they wanted to dig up a trench, didn't they, and put in the electrical line all the way up?
Yeah, they're trying to do with a, a boring tool, you know, you can do, like, you won't go under a road or something like that and cut down on your costs a lot, but...
'Cause you were talking about doing, I think, pulling the line off my lot there too, weren't you, from that pole in the back?
Yeah, going all the way back inside your building, all the way to that pole back there is what they're gonna have to do. I'll, I'll just check into it. I'm sure they put it on a back burner like I have, so, um...
Jason said he was looking in to get some of that hot patch for these potholes. What's the status on...
Well, the guy came in yesterday. We can, if we can get, county doesn't need it. If we can get Beaver Dam or some of these other cities to go in with us, you know, and cut down on the hauling costs, they've gotta go to Evansville to get it. And, um, it's a hundred dollars a ton. We can, you know, set it back there on, well, actually over in the concrete pad over
Right.
where the recycling used to be.
I think it'd be a good idea.
And just use, it's just a hundred dollars a ton, so...
And I don't care to drive a dump truck over myself and get it.
You know, ton or two would last us for a long time, you know.
Sure, get your little old man out and look, to look at my street.
Do what now?
I wonder, might I, is, when you were fixing the, the roads around here, I said, what's the chance of getting the divots that are in Hummingbird Lane fixed? You said you'd have to
Okay.
get some little man out there to look at it.
A little man?
I, I'm assuming it's a man. I don't know who it is.
She wants to have a man in.
I'll, I'll get Jason to take a look at it. Um, of course, you know, getting any kind of blacktop or anything like that hadn't been possible. I mean, the plant's not up and up running again right now, so, um, trying to write all these down and...
We need to get that sirene fixed over by the school. It's not working yet.
Yes, have to talk to Charlie, 'cause that's their responsibility. They didn't, she's in having control over it.
It ain't coming, no. You hear the one downtown, but over there, it's not doing nothing.
Well, they tell me that they're not designed to be heard inside of a house.
Yeah, I live right beside the school, and it never went on during the tornado, not once.
True.
'Cause we were outside listening for it.
I did too.
They've had, um, they've had a hard time getting signals to go from the sheriff's office out to these. Um, the receiver, they had to put it up on top. I understand they put it up on top of this one to try to get better coverage, but... They'll come and check it, and it'll go off, you know, and then...
Make a note in the journal.
All right.
I've got one more thing that I could say, but...
Okay.
I walked down one day, uh, last week to Riverside Market and got lunch. And going past twice is nice before you go up the steep steps there.
Yeah.
That, there's not a chunk on that sidewalk any bigger than this right here. It's just
Okay.
all pieces.
It was supposed to have been part of the sidewalk project, but then it got cut out because that, that corner right there, uh, was, uh, an engineering dilemma, trying to put in a wheelchair ramp, things like that. Um, you know, we can, we can, I guess, when blacktop's running again, we can have, uh, asphalt services to repave it or something, you know, uh...
I don't think blacktop's the answer to fixing sidewalks.
Well, people wanna park there, and, um, it's not meant to be a parking place. State Highway doesn't want people parking there. It's, it's dangerous, so...
Well, part of it, from down where the sidewalk is down, it's got some blacktop on that, but the sidewalk's still all concrete.
We've got, uh, we're gonna contract with a, a, a concrete person. He's got three places to repair downtown, and we can see about putting in a, a concrete sidewalk down there to, you know, to make it...
Well, it looks like we just put a skim coat over the top of it, 'cause there's enough pavement or concrete there to support it.
They'll have to, they'll have to do it by their standards where it'll be sufficient to last, you know, through... Is there a motion on the floor? Is there a second? All in favor? Okay, thank you. Motion carried.
Thank you all.